Okay, it's six thirty, so we'll get this meeting started. I'd like to call the meeting in order, verify compliance with open meetings on notification, adopt the agenda. Can all please stand for the flag.
The Michigan Institute of Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to staff and student recognitions. Just a quick note for A, we'd like to thank all the veterans living in our community and working in our district who have or currently serve. Truly appreciate your commitment and sacrifice for our nation and for our freedoms. And thank you, and to their families who keep things going when they're wherever they may be serving for us, so thank you. On to B, WASB Level Three Award for Quinn. I am. Go ahead, come on. Front and center, Quinn.
Yeah, I knew I shouldn't have gave it to you.
Glad you got all dressed up today. So, at the WASB Regional Meeting on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, Quinn was recognized for achieving Level Three Distinction of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. Level Three indicates two hundred and twenty-five points accumulated from participation and attendance at events such as the Annual State Convention, workshops, seminars, committees, and testifying at a legislative committee. Congratulations, Quinn.
Yay!
Okay, on to C, Spectrum Awards. Where's Logan? He's hiding in back.
So Logan's gonna come up with this reward, award. The Wisconsin School Public Relations Association is an organization that, professional association for school communication coordinators. If you recall, last year we won two awards for that. One on our three awards last year for our mascot makeover. Oh, I'm gonna forget them all here.
And our referendum campaign.
Our referendum campaign.
And our newsletter.
And our newsletter, the window. So, we submitted some different entries this year, and Logan is gonna share with you the exciting one award that we won.
Yeah, so you submit to different categories for a piece of communication that you think would be worth recognition. So they have categories like newsletter, website, referendum campaign.
There we go. And so, this year, we submitted to the special project for our two-way communication venue. So I'm sure you guys are all aware of the Whitnall Family Forum, but last year, we held a focus group about two-way communication, and we then took the feedback from that meeting. We sent out a parent survey to everyone in the district and got parents' opinions on how they would like to see a two-way communication venue, and the privacy settings they would like, guidelines, things like that, and we came up with the Whitnall Family Forum, which is a Facebook group. And we received an award of excellence, so you can receive either an award of merit or the top submissions in a category get an award of excellence. So we got an award of excellence. And I said, I posted a photo of the award in the forum and said that although we got the award, I really feel like it belongs to the parents as well, because they are the ones who said they wanted a venue like this, and they came up with the guidelines, and we've honestly gotten to a point where we kind of stepped back a little bit from the forum, and the parents are really responding to each other, answering each other's questions, pointing them in the right direction, and so it's been really awesome to see. And Whisper said in their feedback with the award that this was unprecedented. They haven't really seen something like this from a district before, and that they really commended our involvement of parents in the process, so.
All right, congratulations, Logan, and thank you. On to D, Whitnall High School Student. Here's Charlie.
Good evening, hello. So, I wanted to have us recognize tonight our Falcon Time leaders. And so, we've talked a bit about Falcon Time as a board. You may or may not have a complete understanding of things, but the students last year, there was actually a group that came and advocated to actually have more student involvement in running Falcon Time, and the way it was set up, specifically on our Mondays when we have our lessons on character education, social-emotional learning, and academic and career planning. And they really want to be the drivers of what's happening in those lessons, and I'd like to present them and have them come forward. We actually have a video we wanna show as well, but Kayla Skletzky and Jeff Parry are the two advisors for this group. Again, I would like to have them come forward and say a little bit, as well as all the students come forward and say a little bit.
It started a little different, and the kids wanna speak a little bit about that.
My name is Colin Plakos. So, me and a, like, I'd say eight or ten other seniors, back in about March, we were really concerned about like, mental health and stress levels among students and stuff, and we brought this to attention to Mr. Parry, because we all had him in physics class. So, we kinda got the discussion going, what can we do to improve the mental health in our school? And then he connected us with Ms. Skletzky, just like how Falcon Time focuses on SEL, social-emotional learning. And from there, we kind of branched into, let's improve the student voice and see what we can do from there. So, and now we have the Red Gen Group as well. That's a different story.
Hi, I'm Sydney Reinhardt. So, this group of students, we talked about how to get our message across to the other students in our school, and over time, we ended up slightly changing our focus to implement changes to Falcon Time rather than the mental health aspect, but now we have the Red Gen Group to work on that as well.
Hi, I'm Lily Doherty. We also worked with admin to change the Falcon Time groupings to mixed grade levels instead of only freshmen with freshmen, sophomores with sophomores, and juniors with juniors. And we also added a student leader, which is all of us, and more, to the Monday Falcon Time classrooms.
Hi, I'm Chad Milan. Over the summer, the Falcon Time leaders met and established a focus group for the school year, and during that meeting, we established all the things that we wanted to accomplish this year, which will be discussed later on. And then in September, we had about a third of the classrooms with Falcon Time leaders in them.
Hello, I'm Matthew Sexton, and by the end of October, us students recruited enough people to put a student leader in each Falcon Time group.
Hi, I'm Ellie Cole. So now, every Wednesday, we meet up, and we discussed what we're gonna have our lesson be on Mondays, and we go over through the previous Mondays, what went wrong and what could have been better, and so we just have a bigger discussion of how things can run smoothly.
Hi, my name is Lauren Bookter. So, our current focus is still on mental health, but we also have expanded into including more students, increasing student voice and change, and making the Falcon Times more welcome to students, and boosting student morale through activities and communication and whatnot.
So then, to bring you up to speed of where we are at now, the students recently, within the last month, came out with a Falcon Time video talking about what they're, what they've done, where they wanna go, what the leader role is, and that's what we'd like to finish with.
Hey, guys! All right, so here we have our Falcon Time leaders, and today, we're gonna teach you guys just a little about what we do as the committee to try and school out.
Why is Falcon Time important?
Falcon Time's important because it gives us an opportunity to teach lessons that fall outside the basic subject areas, like math, or science, or English. It also has an opportunity for you to discover your own leadership skills by joining the committee. You may have never known you had them. It also creates a sense of community within that classroom, because these are people you're gonna be spending a lot of time with, and we hope you build relationships there.
Because instead of the teacher just reading off the script, it's students related with students, and students bringing you what's going on in school, you can have a good conversation with them.
What is the point of Falcon Time?
The point of Falcon Time is not only to provide a place where the school can give announcements to the students, but also to provide a community where all the grades can be in and working together, and help and guide each other.
So, the main point of Falcon Time is to kind of build a stronger community within the school and then the Falcon Times themselves. That's one of the main reasons that we have mixed grade levels, a point in time during the school day where teachers can focus on social-emotional learning and other non-academic school aspects, like careers.
Falcon Time is a great tech to unify together as one school, and to teach each other lessons that we may not learn in the classroom, and update everyone that's around our school.
What changed from last year? So, one of the main changes we had were we mixed the grades, so there is more of a sense of mentorship there with upperclassmen and underclassmen. It's also not run by administration this year, it's student-run. We created a Falcon Time Committee of Student Leaders, so that we have the opportunity to give our own input as a student body, rather than it being controlled from above.
I'd say that everything is straight from last year. We have to totally discard the idea of what we had from last year, and instill the idea that now it's totally different. We have students and teachers working together to try and create a community that's good for, like I said, students and teachers, but no one says we're bad.
How are Falcon Time lessons beneficial for students?
It gives students a comfortable environment to make friends, and also helps them learn social tips that'll help them throughout life.
What is a Falcon Time leader?
So Falcon Time leader, we have sophomores and juniors that are part of our committee. They help us create the lessons, and they also help teach the lessons inside of the classrooms. So they have really work alongside the teacher, making this work a lot, so they really help build that unity and make each classroom its own individual.
Who contributes to Falcon Time lessons?
Students, like the student body, anybody that goes to Falcon Time during the day, they contribute to the Falcon Time lessons, because they let our Falcon Time leaders and our teachers know, like, what they like, what they don't like, what they feel like doing, what they don't feel like doing. That's a big part of it. The Falcon Time leaders themselves, they contribute to the lessons. We have them have meetings every Wednesday, and we talk about the lessons for the upcoming week, and how the lessons for the week before went, and also teachers themselves also contribute to the lessons, because they let us know how things are going in their Falcon Times.
Why did you wanna be a Falcon Time leader?
One of the main reasons I decided to be a Falcon Time leader was as part of the Falcon Time Leadership Committee, you have more control over what are discussed in lessons. So, they have meetings every Wednesday about what the next lesson should pertain, and as a Falcon Time leader, you get to add your input, and you can focus on different community and social-emotional learning aspects that you think are relevant to students and to yourself, that you would love to discuss as a group.
I wanted to become a Falcon Time leader, because throughout my years being a junior, I feel that I've seen many of my fellow students struggle with their difficulties, and so I believe that as a junior, I am equipped to help my fellow students, as well as the freshmen and sophomore, to get through their difficulties and become a better person overall.
I wanted to be a Falcon Time leader, because I thought it'd be a good opportunity for me for the upcoming school year, because they asked us in the sophomore year, it's been training now, and I thought it'd be a good opportunity to get involved in something other than sports in the school. And I feel like I have those leadership qualities where I can just be a class, and they'll listen, and I'm interested, I think.
Why should you be a Falcon Time leader?
First of all, you'll have your own input in the lessons that we're learning, and you'll be able to help your fellow students be excited about the lessons. You'll also be able to demonstrate your leadership skills, which looks great in the future for colleges, or whatever your plans are, and maybe you'll discover you have skills that she never knew you had before.
Thanks for watching our video. Contact one of us if you'd like to join.
Thank you. Awesome. Okay, Chris needed to leave. He wasn't feeling well, so we're gonna skip E till next meeting. So move on to four, Whitnall High School Student Council Report.
All right, so I'm Emma Peterson, I'm Student Council President. You guys don't know by now.
I'm Lauren Bookter, Student Council Treasurer.
I'm Sydney Reinhardt, I'm Student Council Deputy Assistant. All right, so one thing that we really wanna talk about was how Haunted Hallways went this year. I think our turnout was really, really well. So this year, we had a ton of helpers, not only just from our growing number of Student Council members, but also we had a lot of outside of Student Council students helping, and it was really great just to see how many people were coming together and just enjoying a fun time, and we made a lot of new friends and had a lot of new people in our rooms. And so this year, we decided to pick the theme of like scary TV shows and movies, so some of our rooms were Stranger Things themed, The Purge, The Conjuring, and other scary movies. But something different about our event this year was that we partnered with Whitnall Decca, and for the admissions, which were two dollars, all of that money went to Make a Wish Wisconsin, and we ended up raising over eight hundred and fifty dollars from Make a Wish Wisconsin. So that was a really cool aspect of that. And we also, this year, we also had the trick-or-treating half an hour before the Haunted Hallways, instead of doing a PG version and a PG thirteen version of the hallways, because this was a lot easier for us to just have a very kid-friendly version, and then a teenager adult version. So, I think that went really well, especially with all the little kids that showed up. That was really cute, and we were able to give them candy and stuff, so. Yeah, I just think this year went so well, and we also had the raffle going on for an assigned parking spot for the students, so students could bring in non-perishable food items for raffle tickets, and those all went to the Whitnall Decca food drive that we had. So we did a lot of good for our community while also having fun.
All right, so the blood drive. So this year's blood drive, we had around sixty-five people donate, which is one of the highest turnouts that we've ever had. It started pretty early in the morning, the first one was around eight AM, and it went until...
After school.
After school.
Yeah.
Because there were so many people. The blood center was low-staffed, limited the amount of people that were able to donate, because you can't, you know, staying after school for so long is a lot. But, you know, despite that, we had so many, we had a really great turnout, with teachers and staff included, with like, just like student donations, which was really awesome to see like, teachers getting up and donating for what they believe in. And so we had another, the raffle where you could, if you donate, you got five tickets to put into the assigned parking spot, like raffle, and that was really awesome. We had a winner from that, which was really fun to see. Yeah, so after you donated, we had Student Council members bring in a bunch of snacks. We had a big snack table, you got to sit down, wait till you felt a little better before you went to class, so. It was really great. We've got a student that donated in the picture. So, yeah, overall...
What's on her head?
She has a cold pack on her head. This was like, three seconds before she passed the... But she's fine.
Yeah, I personally donated for the first time, and...
And the last time.
And the last time.
I think all of us...
It was, it was rough. You can see my battle scar.
Oh!
I didn't.
Yeah, I puked all over the gym floor. It was great.
No pictures?
She wasn't too...
Yeah. At least I donated the whole thing. Saved some lives.
I have these pictures in the PG thirteen.
I look forward to it.
Yeah, I would sign up to donate, but we actually like, ran out of supplies, so not all of us could donate, so that was like, I mean, it was unfortunate, but also just to see how many people came to like, donate, that we ran out of supplies was kind of like, I mean, I thought that was kinda cool to see.
It was tremendous.
Yeah.
Especially people that had never donated before, didn't know how they were gonna react to it.
They just won.
They still were like, brave enough to say, "That's fine, like, we'll try it and see how it goes."
Yeah.
That's a testament to your work, to get that many students here, because I know on the path it's been a struggle, but to get that many to run out of supplies is great to do.
Yeah, this was just a great part.
All righty, so now we kind of have, we're gonna start like, soliciting student concerns. So, we are kinda gonna focus on that now, since we're over our major events, Haunted Hallways, as we just spoke, and Blood Drive, so we have a little bit of a lull right now, where we're gonna focus really on connecting to the students, because that's really important to us. We wanna do that kind of through surveys, seeing how students feel about certain events and how their kind of attitude is towards, you know, what's going on. We kinda wanna do more face-to-face interactions, and as you saw, the Falcon Time leaders, we're gonna try to work closer with them, so that we can also get more input from students. You know, I feel like that's really important, the face-to-face, because then we're really getting their input. And then with that, we do have a new event coming up in the wintertime, so in the past, we've done formal, which is like a dance, but the attendance was really low, so we're kind of still in the planning stages of what we're gonna do, but we're gonna work closely with students and see kind of what they wanna do, so that we can get our attendance up and kind of push through those winter months for something incentivizing, you know, just making school more fun. Yeah.
What are you gonna do with the data from the surveys?
Um, I don't know, we haven't quite sent them out yet, but the, from the surveys, probably take it and see what we can improve on, like, if we can talk to admin if need be, and, you know, maybe have open Student Council meetings. We tried in the past, but they didn't work out too well, but I feel like this year, students are really motivated to try to get their opinion out there, so I feel like if we had open meetings where kids could just share how they feel, that might...
They didn't work out well, because people didn't come.
It wasn't really promoted.
Okay.
And I think that with the Falcon Times, that's a really great opportunity for us to have like, maybe representatives from Student Council go and talk to kids and collect that data face-to-face, because while surveys work, it's hard to tell if that's really what they want, or if there's another option that they think would be more fun, and it's just way different versus with the individualized surveys, so.
Yeah. And what's been really nice this year is that the Student Council members we do have, have been going out on their own and getting people's opinions, so we don't really have like, a need to like, search people's, because everyone keeps telling us theirs. So that's really nice this year. That was a little different than from last year. We felt like we almost had to like, find people and their concerns, but this year, they're coming to us, which is nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, you know. Okay, moving on to five, Discussion and Future Action Items. Is the Whitnall High School Cafeteria. I will be the cafeteria remodel scope.
Yeah, I'm gonna kinda just, this is the first time that we've actually brought this proposal kind of out in an open session with everybody. We've had a couple Finance Facilities Committee meetings on this, so I just wanna kinda go through the timeline again of kind of how this has evolved, and then where we are tonight, and really what the purpose of each of these proposals are. So I'm kinda treating A, one, two, and three all together, just for, as action items to start with. So, with the conclusion of the referendum, with much of the referendum work, that Student Services space that we toured this summer has become usable for the first time in a long time because of the flooding issues that were found in that area. And so, having that be gutted and the flooding finally fixed, the, looking at that particular space, we started to think about what possibilities were there for that space to be used. In conjunction with the connecting to the courtyard and the cafeteria, understanding how kind of the shape the cafeteria was in as a board, and administration, we all toured that this summer, to look at what kind of shape that was in, we began to think about how can these spaces be brought together in a usable manner, addressing some of the shortfalls that our current cafeteria space has, as well as the possibilities of the multipurpose area, also known as the special services area. So, after that tour and realizing kind of how poor that area was, but also the possibilities, we engaged with CJ Schmidt in some discussions about what could potential concepts look like, and to get a rough idea of budgetary numbers. We engaged with CJ Schmidt, because they were already on board for the referendum, kind of already on site, have seen the spaces already, and could provide us with some of that budgetary information. So, as we began to look at concepts and began to look at those options that came with it, we engaged with the Finance Facilities Committee, run by Steven, and narrowed down our options to really what we thought was a viable option, given the goals of the spaces that were out there, and those goals are kind of listed out in the proposal once again. And so, as we looked at those options, remember, we also brought this forward, the meeting before the annual meeting, because we wanted to look at some of the possibilities of moving some of the dollars into fund balance as we played through that discussion. And so we did put some money into Fund Forty-One at the annual meeting, to begin to, not that it was earmarked specifically for the cafeteria, but that it was earmarked towards a capital improvement project, because we listed out a number of the options that we had out there to spend on capital improvements, but the cafeteria kind of leading, as long as it was gonna be a viable option, meaning kind of that movement of dollars there. So, at that point, as I said, I kinda skipped ahead, but at the annual meeting, directly after, we had a Finance Facilities Committee meeting, continued to refine concepts throughout October, had a second Finance Facilities Committee meeting, in which I believe everyone was, was there to partake in the board, to look further into the concept. And so, tonight, what we have in front of the board is really three different things. First is really the scope of the project and the overall dollar amount that CJ Schmidt has budgeted for from a conceptual standpoint. And so, we wanna keep this really at the, at the level of, here's where CJ Schmidt got the dollars from. You'll notice some detail that they put into their scope. We haven't had the chance to really fully engage at the granular level about what this is, because we don't have CJ Schmidt or Bray on as our contracted services yet. So, they've kinda done this work for us, just as a continuation of the relationship we've built through the referendum. So that scope is being brought forward as one proposal. If the board is good with the proposal, and good with the project that's there within the scope of dollars, that's where then two and three would come in, where we would bring on formally CJ Schmidt, and formally bring on Bray Architects to continue the work, get down to the granular level about what this project would really entail. If the board is good with the cafeteria remodel scope after we discuss, that doesn't mean the project is over and we just move on. What happens at this point is when we bring on CJ Schmidt and Bray, we bring forward, much like the referendum, we bring forward a bid package that the board would then really approve the project come February, January, February, March. Todd, you might have better timelines on that, but that's when you would see the bid packages that come together to actually formulate the dollar amounts that CJ Schmidt is proposing here tonight for, for a project in the remodel scope, letter I. To do with that, I was saying I was adding to that, with that, we do have Charlie here, he has students and staff who have, are really here to talk about a couple different things. Charlie, I'll let you introduce some of the work that you've done from, with students and staff from the last Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, to provide some further background.
Yeah. So at, at last Finance and Facilities, we had a lot of hypothetical conversations about what-ifs and scenarios and things like that, and really, you know, our students and our staff live the cafeteria and the uses of that space on daily basis, and we've had some conversations to start beginning to talk about what are some of the issues that we have with our cafeteria space and the components in our schedule that revolve around the cafeteria. And so, really, there are three points that, that I want our students to be able to kind of speak to their personal experiences of. One is having that split lunch, and so we've got the B lunch, which, a couple years ago, it was a student who would have to go to class, halfway through class, get up, leave, go to lunch, and come back to that class for the remainder half of the time. That was slightly mitigated with the start of Freshman Academy last year, but still, it does exist where even freshmen still might have a class where they're splitting with the lunch period. So that's one problem that I'd like them to kind of speak to their, their experiences around. Second is the current structure, the way... Second is the current structure, the way our cafeteria is laid out and set up um in terms of having enough time to get through the lunch line, get the food items that they want, having enough time to eat the food that they, they have paid for, or their experiences with the setup with furniture, et cetera. Uh, and then third, their experiences, now that we have some new spaces for collaboration, how they utilize those spaces or if they've utilized those spaces, uh, and what they see those spaces as in terms of either a benefit or if their opinion is opposite to a benefit. Hear from them on their perspective. So, unfiltered on this. Um, additionally, we, we spent some time, uh, took a trip to see another school that has used C.G. Schmidt and Bray uh in terms of how they have their cafeteria laid out uh to get a better idea of how they do their services, how they do their transition and flow into the cafeteria uh for staff and students. We normally don't get to see other schools and how they actually have a lunch period. We might see their space after school if we're at a sporting event, uh, but to actually go see it live and in person was a, a task that we also had, which gave us opportunities to either even further have these conversations. So, um, students, come on forward.
Where did you go?
Uh, we went to Hartford High School.
Why there?
Because they have um a schedule similar to what we talked about as a hypothetical, as well as they have used Bray and C.G. Schmidt, and they were a easy contact to get in touch with. Come on forward, we can sit at the table.
So, the three, the, the three points that we wanna kinda highlight their experience of. So, the first one is the, the idea of the B lunch. And so, again, I know you introduced ones yourselves, et cetera, etc. But just if you wanna share current grade level as well, so then you can share kinda your experience with the split lunch.
So, I'm a senior, uh, so my experience, I saw the year having B lunch for my history class. And it was very frustrating, both the students and the teacher, um, like we were having a really good discussion that would just get interrupted because you would have to go to lunch at that time. Tests were also a big issue, like how do you take a test, like in math class, it takes forty minutes, you go straight through, where do you have to split that up into two twenty-five minute sections? It's like cheating.
Hi, I'm Lily. I'm a junior. I personally had B lunch, but uh I always had A or C, so it was really a problem for me interrupting classes. But uh, it would be, you know, a problem, you know, the bell would ring and the teacher would have the classroom open and like you could hear all the kids, you know, shouting, you know, 'cause it was passing period, you know, people, you know, they still form it to talk with their friends. Uh, it's not a huge deal, obviously, but it was, you know... So, I've never personally had an issue with the B lunch, 'cause I've never encountered B lunch.
My name's Skylar Martin. Um, I'm a sophomore, and since I was in freshman academy last year, I did experience having that B lunch. And honestly, in my opinion, it affected, as Colin said, tests, maybe labs and science classes, like it affected those types of things. So, like, you're deep into a discussion or you're having like, you're taking a good test, you're getting on a roll of writing your essay, and then all of a sudden you're split and then you have to go to lunch. And maybe those thoughts that you had were lost during lunch, or then you have to come back and sit down right away, right go back into what you were doing, and I feel like that's hard for a lot of kids, like emotionally, to do those types of things.
Hi, I'm Cindy. I'm a junior. And like Lily, I've never had B lunch, I've never had that experience, but I know my friends have had B lunch in the past, and a big thing was like the test and scheduling around that, because sometimes they would move the students to like C or A lunch as mine. I think that was what was going on, but sometimes people wouldn't even know where they're going, so I didn't even know where they're going either. So, yeah, I, I don't really know if I like the idea of a split lunch like that, but yeah.
I'm Jessie. I'm a senior for the tenth time. Um, I have the honor of supervising the lunch room this year. And uh, it is, it is. So, a couple of the things that I've observed, um, our A lunch is very, very, very crowded right now. We, it's not like we're above fire code capacity, but in terms of personal space, we're a little bit above capacity, and when kids don't wanna be near, near each other, they find ways to get away from each other, and then I'm chasing them. And uh, it, it's uh, there really isn't wiggle room, you know, Colin's a really tall guy and he was saying he can't really move his legs under the table, or if he gets the weird bar seat, he can't, you know, maneuver very properly. Um, I would say that our current freshman lunch is actually a very good size, the issue being that it's only freshmen. And having talked with some of the kids last year, they did feel like that really segmented them. It kinda helped right away because they were less nervous, but um, you know, as they move forward into the year, they start to get a little sick of each other, and um, they're, you know, if you talk to Mr. Quinlan, who supervises the cafeteria during all lunches, talking to him about last year's freshman lunch, it's like talking to someone who's fed to be about, like, they were apparently very rowdy and there wasn't any older modeling of proper behaviors. Um, I personally have witnessed a former staff member place his hand on the wall of the cafeteria and do this, and the entire wall shook. And I thought, I'm not an architect, but I don't think it's supposed to do that. So, you, you know, whatever would come with the remodel, the option of having more space for different furniture or um some more space for mobility, I think is, is absolutely worth exploring. I've been lucky that I did, I have not had to have the B lunch aside from with freshman academy. Um, it was usually our lovely social studies teachers who somehow took the hit 'cause apparently they didn't want kids to stop working the class, they'd have to replace, so, yeah.
I'm a social studies teacher, and I was in freshman academy time, I never had anything but B lunch. And it tests your levels of creativity as a teacher. I know how to bring them back after twenty-five minutes of running together. To come back and get back to the serious topics that we were trying to talk about. And then when it did come with testing, you know, we had to break the tests up into two different parts, whether they can finish within twenty-five minutes or not, and then back, trying to get them corralled and know that they can finish in fifteen minutes. Um, they allowed for, for those who didn't, did it on time. So, that, that made it challenging for us to, to try and use all the time that we had. We had to at times, we had an awkward on, to try and switch to a B lunch or a C lunch so that we had a test that was continual, that would take the whole forty-five minutes, fifty minutes, um, to schedule them, but that would just pack in lunch periods.
The uh, next point we wanted to kinda talk about was the service line, so actually going through the line to get your food.
Can, can we discuss things, since they're going from point to point, can we discuss these a point at a time? Or do we wanna listen to it all and then?
Do you have specific questions for them or?
Yeah.
Is that what they said?
I do. Sure, appreciate it. Um, so, as far as the freshman academy goes, right now, do they have a, a split lunch?
Well, the, so the freshman academy runs in the same time as that B lunch, so because freshman academy is three hours, it's not, a little more complicated. So, they might be doing fifty minutes, three classes that day, they might not. Um, I don't teach in freshman academy this year, but I can say that what we did last year is there were days where it kinda rotated like a traditional schedule, and so you would get kids who had that traditional B lunch, twenty-five minutes here, twenty-five minutes there, table schedule. Um, it depends on the day. They might be leaving to go to lunch after an hour working on something, which isn't as bad. They could probably use a break then. Um, but I think the idea would be if we didn't have to have that B lunch time, freshman academy could be at a different point in the day. Whereas right now, our cafeteria does not fit half the student body, so we can't have just two lunch periods. Um, so having the freshmen have that B lunch broken up so that everyone could fit right there.
But right now, they don't traditionally have a B lunch, right? They don't, they don't have a thing where they, they're in a class and then they have to stop after twenty-five minutes and go to lunch and then?
So, they might. They might. It, it's up to what the teachers plan for that day. I mean, they, they might be doing something where they're all in the auditorium for an hour right before lunch. They might have a traditional, you get broken up halfway through.
So...
Yeah, most of the time when we gave traditional assessments, we had to do a rotation of three so that you only had about twenty-five kids at a time, and we had that issue with B lunch.
Do we have that issue this year?
Yes.
Okay. So, and to kinda go with what you were saying before and what you alluded to, um, there, I, I believe we have not been doing things where we have a class that has a lab portion to it that um gets split up by lunch, correct?
No, that was always a point of administration to make sure that that was.
Yeah, so that's not really a factor for that?
Right. I don't think that, and it, usually a biology lab isn't gonna be working with things that are as time sensitive. We never made them fix after lunch, after lunch, but for other reasons.
That's the problem, but, but Mary and I...
You and I, but...
Yeah. Um, and then, um, the, the, so you guys that have experienced a B lunch, that was an issue for you from what I understand. But um, what about, I mean, do, do all the students or a majority of the students see an issue with not having? I mean, how do the freshmen feel about, obviously, at the beginning of the year, they're kinda fine being alone, but how do they, how do the majority of the freshmen feel about not being intermingled with the rest of the student body? Or, for example, how do the seniors feel about not having freshmen around for their lunch? In, in general, not just a specific collection of folks that are here. Any take on that?
I'll answer that. Like, from a senior standpoint, like, first few weeks, like, it's great, I don't have to lunch with going freshmen. But like, from when I was a freshman, being in a lunch with sophomores, juniors, and seniors, um, really, that's the one time of day where all four classes guaranteed aren't gonna be together. That's kinda like where you establish, like, this is how you need to behave in high school. Like, your childish manners, you might have been able to pull that off at middle school. Here, the seniors, like, we tell you, like, don't do this, that's just idiotic. And I feel, especially with last year, the freshmen really had a wild behavior because I think the seniors and juniors of the class didn't have that influence over them. Also, with having the freshman isolated lunch, as Mustafa said, the, like, A lunch is absolutely packed, which is more for them, it's one of those topics we wanted to talk about. Like, through that B line, it's really hard to have, to, with how packed they are.
Do you think it'd be beneficial or maybe even logistically possible to have freshmen isolated at the very beginning of the year and then phase them in? Just food for thought, something to think about.
There, there are lots of ways and, you, as our conversations went in the car ride, through the conversation head, there, there are lots of different ways that we can investigate. I mean, I don't wanna get too deep into the how we do a schedule piece, how we do those spaces.
Just throwing that out there as something to consider. Thank you.
Um, so, okay, Colin, you kinda started to announce that A lunch is happy lunch this year?
Okay, I have had a B lunch.
Okay. So, if you wanna skip to A lunch, how private is the service line?
Yeah, like, we do have twenty-five minutes to eat lunch. It was last year, I had an English class right before lunch, so I had to go from the other side of the building, and by the time I got to the food service area, the line would be so long. My twenty-five minutes to eat lunch, we cut down to five to ten minutes because it takes fifteen minutes to get through that line. My parents asked me when I get home, "How's your lunch today?" "I don't know. I didn't really taste the food, 'cause I just jammed in and out, 'cause I did have time to eat it." So, I feel like to do a remodeling of how we do the food service line would be beneficial so that we can give students further, faster, and get more time to eat.
I do not have A lunch this year, I have C lunch, but last year, A lunch, and I was even closer than Colin. I administered it in the hundreds, like, it was an English social studies hallway, and even I got there. The lines were already freakishly long, and I'm over here like, I'm so close to the cafeteria, how is this happening? And it's even worse, is that A lunch is significantly, like, for some reason, like, it's more packed than C lunch. I don't, I don't really understand. Like, maybe it's just my perspective, I've seen it's just so much more packed than C lunch was, or maybe it's just a difference in years. Um, but the lunch line would be super long. And if I decided to go by like where the pizza was, there's like a wall in the line, and the wall's only good enough to fit like two people going this way. But then there are the kids that, they're going this way, and then there's two rows of kids that come this way, and it's not fun. Like, if you're trying to get around other kids, like you, it's like shoulder to shoulder, you're squeezing, you're hitting each other, and if there are backpacks, like, there's not enough room, and that makes the lines even slower. Uh, and it gets to where like, you know, you, like Colin said, like, you're kind of just putting the food down. You're not really like, oh yes, this is great pizza, you know?
I do have A lunch this year, and it's, it's horrible. I mean, five, ten minutes is, would be nice to eat. I mean, you're getting down there and the line is so long. And you're trying to get through, but then there's people coming different ways and coming other ways, and there's pushing, there's shoving, and then you hit walls, and it, it's no fun. I mean, that's not how it should be. And the um, service leaves are trying so hard to get everyone through, but there's just so many people in just one area. It's just like a swarm of bees. Like, I mean, it's, it's horrible.
Was that where you last year, when you were in a smaller freshman lunch?
No, not this past year.
Um, I'm in C lunch this year too, and I don't usually take the food service anymore because my experience last year just took so long that I didn't really have time to eat, so I just find it more convenient to bring my own food now. But even like my friends that go through those food service lines, like even in C lunch, which isn't as packed as A lunch this year, it still takes a long time and like, I don't, I don't know, it's just unfortunate to only have like a small amount of time to eat, especially like with like the, what Lily was saying, with like the little crowded hallway place with like backpacks. I've literally almost gotten slammed with backpacks for it. Not safe, but um, yeah, I think for like some of the more specialty items, it's a lot faster to get through the line. But like that one bar we have?
The world's greatest.
Yeah, like, that line, I've seen literally stretch all the way back toward the new school store, and yeah, I just, I don't know if we can fix that.
I wanted to say something also, so another, sorry, this is Lauren. Sorry, so another thing I've experienced, I'm also in C lunch, and I quite often take hot lunch, but there's some days where I know that um during the lunch period, I have to go talk to certain teachers. So, I bring a cold lunch and I take my lunch with me to their class right away because there's no way I'm gonna have enough time to get my lunch and get to their class and get back down with the tray away by the time the um, the lunch period's over. Another thing that um I've experienced is having enough time to get lunch, eat lunch, and use the bathroom, fill up my water bottle before the class starts, 'cause I have an issue with that where the first fifteen minutes of class, you can't use the bathroom or leave to filter water or anything like that. So, having enough time to do that and then go to class and sit down and um be able to like function right away if you need to use the bathroom, you need to filter water. A lot of times, you have to wait, and that can be not awesome.
And you're a senior?
I'm a junior, I'm sorry.
Junior, okay, thanks.
Do you have a U M P for a school lunch?
No, I, I don't even, I, I don't eat lunch a lot of times. Um, but it, it, even just getting to my classroom, walking from the gym end through the cafeteria, up the stairs, down the science hallway, I swear you guys, it takes like eight minutes for me to get back to my classroom. Um, it's the, a redesign of, of how traffic flows.
Usually what?
Usually what. Uh, next, any questions on the service line?
Yeah, what's the lunch count for period?
Um, A lunch is higher, it's like three-twenty. B lunch is about two-fifteen or so, or the freshman classes. C lunch is a little bit smaller, like... C lunch is a little bit smaller, like two eighty. Uh, and really that has to do with, we have some seniors who then are relieved for their co-op work experiences, which is what makes C lunch usually smaller.
Thank you.
So last point then is, we have two collaboration spaces. Um, I know I've come to talk to some of you when you're in those spaces, but if you wanna speak to anything about those new spaces? Can you use those spaces with the class?
Sure.
Sorry, oh, can you just tell us where they are, like, and describe where they are in the school, please?
So the, uh, the first one was part of the referendum, and that's the STEM Commons area, so right outside of, um, Business Tech Ed School Store. So it's part of the original referendum concept. The other spot is, we have the upper courtyard, and there's actually a set of doors that goes out to a kind of little alcove. Uh, we had a vending machine, that was about it, and part of the senior class gift was some money dedicated towards some flexible furniture in there, and some TVs that students can actually plug their, their laptops into. Only the Generation Six without a downable jeans thing, it's like, um, but those are the two spaces, so upstairs by that, downstairs the steps down.
Thanks.
So, Chris, get your phone. I don't know, like, I feel, uh, like that, um, that special services vary up into a bigger collaborative space. Would be beneficial, like, if we had that space for classes, just go out there with more comfortable furniture than sitting in an old fashioned style desk. Like, I, there's a kind of couch thing you can sit on, read my English book, rather than it's sitting in a desk that I barely fit into, that would be much appreciated. Just every once in a while, have the teacher take the class down there, or if it's like a math class or physics or something, if you have like swipe boards or TVs in there that we can work with and, um, display and work on group projects, a more collaborative area, I think that would be beneficial for students' classes.
Uh, I never used the downstairs STEM, uh, area where it's the new, um, but I did use the upstairs where there's those, they're kinda weird chairs, they look like steps. But, uh, they're nice for labs. It's a nice, well-lit area where there's more natural light than LEDs, which kinda hurt my eyes. Um, but it's actually really nice. I don't really use the TVs, it was during a math class, but it was really nice to sit out there where we could talk. And most of the classroom doors were, were closed, so we could talk more than at like a really quiet whisper, it was like normal people talking. So it was nice to get out of the classroom, walk around, because they can get kinda stuffy, because like especially if the heater's on too hot because the teacher's really cold, or if it's too cold because the teacher's really hot, or whatever. So it's nice to get out and kinda, obviously not be distracted to other students, but to work out there. And having more spaces like that where more kids can enjoy it would be actually really nice. I think that if they could, they would use it. Uh, obviously, it's up to teachers more in, during, in a classroom setting, it's not up to us to say, we're gonna go and we're gonna do our work here. But it is, you know, nice, you know, it's a nice kinda tall area too, so, yeah, I like it.
I agree with Lily on that. I think having that nice, like, it sounds really, I don't know what kinda word, but having that natural light. I mean, I think that's one thing that I miss throughout the day is like just that full natural light. I feel like I get more work done there because I'm just relaxed sitting there with that natural light and a nice comfortable spot, having the ability to kinda move around, maybe, uh, work on a presentation, give a presentation to another student as like, for help and examples, and I think that, that helps a lot.
So I'm, I've actually never used those spaces with my classes, but again, that's up to teachers discretion, but I've seen people, um, work there, and I, I always see like happy faces when I'm over, and that, like, they're just so, I like, and especially like after school too, I see people in the upstairs one and just like talking to each other. I think that's really cool. I, I've seen a lot of like happier students in those spaces, even though I've never used them myself in a classroom. Um, I think they're, they're great environments. I especially like the upstairs one with the natural light, I think that's really cool. But yeah, I, I know a lot of people like to use the downstairs one for the Falcon times that we have, for like a studying area. So yeah, I think those are a great addition to our school, and if we could utilize more, that'd be great.
I think one of our English teachers, Mr. Craig, would be like poster child for a collaborative space, because I think I would have to fight him to use it in some hours, actually. Um, he, he, I saw his class giving speeches out there, which is really great, and I think it sets a different tone. You take them out in the classroom, it feels more formal, it's different. Um, he'll split his classroom, you know, half the kids will go out, and they'll have one kid reading out loud, and the rest of the group can babble in their, in their reading silently in their room. So, um, I, yeah, it, I think it's a, a good investment, um, especially for kids who, there's something about the desks that don't fit our kids. I think some personality-wise, most of them, like Colin, basically, like, kinda feels the, like, Mr. Smith.
So that's, uh, careful when I graduated, about that. Um, from prior to when school starts to after school and it's a complete night, I've always given those thoughts. They're all night, like, a lot of the children.
Think in spite of that.
I had a, I had a lovely idea, it just popped in my head, like, the space by the business classrooms and school stores and that. It really has like a college vibe, kind of, like, for me being a senior, I've gone and visited, I think, almost ten different, um, college campuses and universities. And all throughout, like, their dorm buildings and their academic buildings, they have little collaborative spaces. And from going there during the actual college school day or visit, I see like college students using those spaces. So I think that would be really beneficial for high school students that are seeking that higher education to kinda like, I guess, adjust and get used to being able to having those spaces available, how to use them properly.
Um, me personally, first, um, in class or in school, I haven't had the opportunity to go to either of them. But before school, I do sit down there with my friends, and it's like a completely different environment than, you know, si- standing before school or sitting in the cafeteria. There's other people, usually, um, me and my group of friends, um, sit there and we talk and drink coffee before school, and it's a way different feeling. We, I feel like we take more like pride in that area, that, um, it's sort of like our own, like, space, and it's less formal, and it's more like getting ready, getting used to the day. Um, feeling like prepared for classes to start, and I've found it's like, kind of like uncanny, that we like, kinda like take care of that space, like ourselves, like, um, we have like breakfast somewhere sometimes, we have like, and we always clean up after ourselves because we wanna, we want it to be clean, like, we want it to stay nice, and we're like happy with it. So it is nice that.
And I will also say, we made co- a lot of notions that kids are really very childish. I've never seen kids, like, while they look like stairs, I've never seen kids, you know, walking all over them, climbing them. They're very respectful in that area, which you wouldn't think, because like, obviously, if kids see scared, scares, stairs, they'll be like, yes, let me just climb them. But like, they're not, they're very respectful. I've seen them on their computers at the top level, bottom level, sure, their feet go on it, but that's like, they have like the weird, like, three of them, so they sit at the top and put it on the second one, so. But it's not like they're, you know, crawling, laying, rolling down, you know, they're respectful.
Questions?
How much square footage are we talking about again?
For what?
For the, uh, proposed new collaborative space to use as, uh, for, for a good seventy-five minutes of the day, uh, as a cafeteria overflow or whatever.
I, I don't have the.
Uh, forty-nine eighty, I think. Okay. Um, so it's two-thirds the size, or a little more, two-thirds the size of the courtyard, but it's a little over half the size of the current cafeteria, is what's proposed. Um, so how do you imagine, I could see there'd be a lot of interest in, in using it if it's, if it's set up in a versatile enough manner, but, but how, how do you propose so many people getting to use it? Since there'd be so much interest, I mean, it seems kinda like, like Mrs. Todd, Mustafa said, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember your last name, but, um, I think it sounds like a lot of other folks do it either, but, uh, um, like, you'd have to, you know, kinda dicker with Mr. Cray over, or Crya, where how to, I mean, how's that gonna work? Where so many people would wanna?
So we, we currently, I mean, there, there are lots of spaces in our building here, and we have a reservation system that we use, it'd be the same type of process.
Okay.
All days. Professionals, I trust the teachers to have those conversations with their colleagues to utilize the space.
Would you have logistics set up to be able to?
Mr. Craig just happens to be right next door from me, so.
Oh, it's not convenient.
It's free.
Just the idea of more opportunities for our, for our spaces.
Yep.
So you visited the other school, so thoughts about that?
Yeah, so, I, I mean, we, we left the financing facilities and obviously had kind of the, the concept idea of having the two lunch periods. And, you know, I, I personally left with still questions around, how does the flow work? How, how are kids actually walking the halls from space to space? Supervision, how does supervision work out? You know, if you learn from the students that they treat these nicer spaces, nicer than the cafeteria space, um, but what does that mean for supervision? You know, like, how can you have to figure out how to have more staff supervise more spaces, things like that? So I went to go see those types of things and get a better feel for myself, but, you know, still, we're, we're in proof of concept, and it's, it's a moot point on, on that if, you know, you do a cafeteria remodeling. But as, as we've been having conversations and seeing these, these three points as problems or concerns or questions to, to explore, really, that, that was kinda the idea too, is to see, how does another school do it? How does another school have their serving line? And just gotta see it in action for all of ourselves.
Yeah, but I can just mention, the space that we saw at Hartford, their serving area was probably to a large size. And they had thirteen students as the most, I think, and it was blue, blue, for being in order of fashion. And how they allowed the student body to give that extra breathing time, uh, twenty-five minutes. Because they structured it so lunch slash, uh, resource, resource time was fifty minutes. So twenty-five minutes that you go to lunch, or they would hold the server and go in these areas, and then they would switch. So then you get twenty-five minutes to eat, and then once you ate, you go to another resource area, and you gave them time to breathe. And I've heard anything in the last eighteen years is that getting seven classes in a day, they need a little time just to relax. That, that time built into the day offered that, and the spaces that they used, well, we have the same areas, really, you know.
Yeah, so first of all, thanks for the time that you put into this, to come out here tonight and to also put the time into going up to Hartford to take a look at, you know, how another school is doing it. Well, we've got you here, I was just wondering if anybody has comments about anything that you particularly liked about what you saw, that we should take into consideration? For, um, you know, for, as, as we're going through this. So anything that you observed that you're like, oh yeah, that's really great, um?
Um, they had a variety of like seating arrangements, just like they have how we have our, um, like, traditional, um, cafeteria tables. But they also have like round tables that fall out of chairs and, and from going to college visits, like, they have a variety of different seating options. Like, they have booths, they have circle tables, rectangle tables, just having a variety, like, of options, like, hey, me and my friend, this is just a smaller six. Let's just go sit in the small table, so we can be a lot closer to each other, or then stretched out a long table, seating people that might be a little.
Uh, they also had, uh, so basically, after cafeteria, then they had this East Commons, which was kind of like our old social servant services. But it was actually kinda small. It was a little small, but they had one of the gyms open, and they also had the library. Now, obviously, their school's a lot bigger than ours, so their library was quite a hike across the school. Um, but using that library for them, like, there are, there were students there, and they said they really liked it, and the way it seemed to me, it looked really nice, you know? There's a quiet space to do your homework. They actually had like a special room off the library to do like essays and stuff, which I thought was great. Um, but they also, uh, you know, it was a place to do your homework. Then one of the gyms was like to get your energy out. Obviously, it's not great for the next class for how you're smelling, but like, maybe just get nose plugs.
That is their biggest complaint, is the smell.
Yeah.
She's voting no, so like.
Also, there's like those freshmen, or like some kids at certain grade levels, like, they needed just twenty-five minutes of running around, they're shooting hoops, and just getting that energy out from having to sit at a school desk for hours on end, just staring at a white board or a book, like, you get pretty restless.
Yeah, it was like their kind of recess back when we had elementary school, when we were like five. But, uh, they only had, they had one of the gyms open and one of them closed, so they could still have like gym classes running, which was what we thought of when, uh, when we sat there, like, what gym classes? Like, yeah, we still have them, they're just in the other gym. So it was still happening at the same time. And then those East Commons, it was like relaxing, talking with your friends more aloud, almost like a cafeteria, but you don't have the stress of eating and trying to talk to your friends. So it was like, straight up, um, like, talk to your friends and, like, you could do homework if you so chose. Uh, then what else? Oh, you could switch between them, just not the library, but, because that was quite a hike across the school, yeah.
Yeah, I saw some students, like, just putting their head in, in that, um, um, space for twenty-five minutes, just like, you just take a break. I personally have five AP classes, four of them are back to back. If I had a twenty-five minute period, if I could just sit and breathe, I would love that.
I think the big thing is just to consider some options, um, whether it's stick with seven classes, but add in a resource period for kids. Um, Charlie Dinkle, the idea of doing a hot schedule in front of me, which potentially would allow for longer AP classes. And I was an AP teacher, I surprised him a little bit as he was talking to me, you know, I think just considering all the, the possibilities, which with, you know, the confines of our cafeteria right now, because we only have so many students we can fit, um, it really limits us. So going forward, it would be nice to have, you know, start with the facility that can fit however many students, and then move forward with what's gonna work best for everybody.
So I think, I, I wanna also thank you for the time and the, that all of you have gone and putting to that. And as we move forward, if the board decides to take action on this, we will wo- work more into the details. Because tonight, we, we've been trying to be very careful about not getting too far ahead of ourselves, because if there isn't approval on the concept tonight, there's a lot of time and effort that's spent into it. So, um, tonight is just about the concept of the cafeteria, we're not approving, but we can't consider that without some of those things. And I guess, um, I know that the board had wanted last time, you know, what might it look like? I'm gonna call it worst case scenario, uh, we keep the same schedule that we have. If the concept tonight for this cafeteria does not require us to go to a new schedule, it gives us the option of looking at other schedules, which our current facility doesn't. I just wanna bring us back to that about what's happening tonight, so we don't get too far down with some of that pieces. And so, um, that's, that's where we were. So tonight is just listening to that and knowing what questions there are, and then, um, taking action in a couple of weeks in terms of that, those pieces of it. So I just wanna remind us that it's not part of the proposal tonight, it's just considering options that might be available should the concept, um, get approved.
We're not supposed to take any action on any of it tonight, anyway.
Correct. Correct, I said in two weeks.
Well, but you did mention twice, you mentioned approval tonight, so I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I missed you.
Okay, I, I do have a couple of things still, though. Um, one is, Charlie, I'm still concerned, like I mentioned at the previous, the Facilities Finance Committee meeting, I'm still concerned that, you know, we, uh, like Colin mentioned and a couple others, the, the, what you call a resource time, but a chance to decompress and that kinda stuff. I'm concerned that, uh, it may get absorbed into longer classes, which, which, uh, obviously, Mustafa would like. But, but what I'm really concerned about is that administration might see this as, okay, well, Falcon time has been, you know, kind of taken over by the students, and that's great, and we like what's going on there. But we still have stuff, we, we wanna run for this, and then, so administration absorbed that into, guess what, it's no longer, um, decompression time. It's more administrating, you know, administration taking charge of your, of your life for another twenty minutes or something like that. I don't wanna go through all this expense and two and a half million dollars and that kinda stuff with the ideas of providing some decompression time and that kinda stuff, just to have it then evolve into, um, uh, administration taking over that time from the students. I would not be a fan of that. And I, I personally would, would wanna guard against that. Um, the other thing, uh, that. The other thing that I'm concerned about still is logistics. Are you talking about two 50-minute periods for lunch then?
So ultimately, it's a moot point to really talk about any of that stuff, if we don't have anything with a cafeteria remodel?
Well, then you have to decide what is the cart and what is the horse, okay? And I think we may have a disagreement as to what the cart is and what the horse is, because, you know, I need to know the idea going forward as to what this two and a half million dollars might be spent on before I could possibly say, okay, it sounds reasonable, let's explore it further. But instead, what I'm hearing is, yeah, I need to know that we're going to have two and a half million dollars to work with to be able to put together more of an idea. And that, to me, that's the...
So the point tonight, John, is that we're not coming forward and saying this is the schedule. We will come back with a, this is the schedule conversation at a later date. Right now, it was to speak to the experiences the students have in our current spaces as they exist today. That's the call to action around, you need to do something with our current spaces as they exist today and have those further conversations about, yes, what does that look like? And I solicit these folks as the main drivers of that conversation. And I'm one person. And if they all come to me and say, I'm advocating for this and this is a solution that will work and it's embedded through multiple layers, that's the direction we're going to go.
Yeah, I still think that, you know, you can fix the walls that are failing and that kind of stuff a lot cheaper than two and a half million dollars. And so that's why I'm saying, what you're talking about needs to be logistically feasible to warrant spending the money on it, which is why I keep asking about the logistics.
Yeah, I'll just piggyback on that. So for me in the decision-making process, one of the big benefits that I see is that, okay, now we have more optionality in the schedule. And so when I'm looking at making a decision on this, I'm like, oh, a big benefit that we're getting is, you know, potentially improved schedules. And so I think, like what John's saying, is that we don't want to undergo this building project then and say, oh whoops, we still have the same, we still have the same limitations or we still have three lunch periods. So I guess I would like some reassurance that we have, we'll definitely have the opportunity to go to two lunch periods instead of three and those kinds of things. So I, they go together in my mind.
Thanks, guys, appreciate your time.
Thanks, great job, guys.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Are there any specific questions on the proposals themselves before we have proposed pieces? Should one be approved, any question? The structures that were seen, around C.G. Schmidt or Bray?
Well, I'm just a little surprised that the construction managers had 1% and the architects had 6%.
Yeah, it's the same structure for the referendum. And why that structure should place, I'm not sure what happens. Obviously, where it means with C.G. Schmidt and Bray, there's a lot of difference to Bray as far as compliance goes, as far as concepts go. C.G. Schmidt needs the architectural drawings from Bray. I was interested, there's quite a bit on Bray's side versus C.G. Schmidt, their expertise on that. So if we're looking at who we rely on, maybe a little more, while there's intention, it's certainly Bray from compliance and drawing space. It's worth noting, we did get Bray to come down 1%. Their fee proposal, which was similar to what we saw at the referendum, they came down 1%. The reason for that is, we kind of treated it as, we asked them to treat it as an extension of the high school project. And so thus, they were willing to say, yes, all right, because it's kind of based on dollar amount matters. And they treated it like an extension of the high school project, to bring down 1%. One more, the original proposal, 7%. Mansion Refund, we brought it down to 6. And instead of C.G. Schmidt, the 1%. That's rock bottom. We're happy that they are continuing that proposal from the referendum.
Is there normally a dollar amount threshold for referendum?
Say it differently, I'm not sure.
Okay, so is there normally some dollar amount on a project where above a certain amount, you're expected to go to referendum, or it's just matter when you can?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, there's not?
Well, it's borrowing over a million dollars.
Well, if you borrow, so that's where, if you borrow over a million dollars, you have to have a 30 to 45 day window in which the public can have an opportunity to petition. It's like a notice to your voters. However, it's all within your revenue limit.
Okay.
So when you don't go to referendum, you are taking dollars from your referendum limit. When you go to referendum, or from your revenue limit, when you go to referendum, you're now outside of the revenue limit. So as a district, you need to balance, how much can we afford within our revenue limit? And if you can't, now that's when we start to think about referendum.
So for the six and a half million dollar football field track complex, they did not go to referendum. They were able to do something about extending loans on projects that they were winding down and things like that. And I know that it seemed, I mean, there's a six and a half million dollar project and they didn't go to referendum. And they did some banking wizardry and stuff to avoid asking the taxpayers if they wanted to pay that bill. And I want to, I would like to avoid the appearance or reality of us sidestepping, you know, the...
The money was in the, within the fund balance. And then at the very end is where they use the, something I can't hear, but the money came to pay off.
So Bernie said that the money was cheap in time.
Just be straight, the original money came from the fund balance.
Yeah, what does that have to do with the suggestion, how we have the money? I'd suggest it's to do with...
Well, we don't exactly have the money. We have some of the money and, because if you look at it, I mean, even in the proposal, it says, now, there's a lot of pages I've got open, so I got to find it. But in that proposal, you know, it, okay, that's not that one either.
Well, your question was if there's a threshold above which we need to go to referendum, right?
Right.
We've established that there isn't.
Okay, well then...
If there's borrowing over a million, if we're borrowing over a million, there are some factors that go into it.
Okay, so that was my question. And then with that information, I had a comment about a concern of mine.
Okay.
Okay?
But to say that we're trying to sidestep, I mean, that's...
I want to make...
This is a different project than... What?
I said, that's what they did.
You said you don't want us to do that now.
I, well, to say I don't want it to have the appearance, it sounds like, I'm willing to be misleading, but I don't want it to look misleading, and that's not the point at all.
But that was a different administration and a different board, correct?
Well, and when we did that, we also did have that 30 to 45 day time period that no one said anything about. So there was plenty of opportunity for the community at that time, John, to say something.
I understand that.
We had the money at the time, that was the decision that was made.
Well, actually, the way that project went is, they borrowed, they borrowed money based on extending loans from a project that was winding down at the middle school and Bernie sat right there.
But what is, I just want, what does that have to do with tonight's?
I did, I tried to explain that, but...
But you're relitigating something that happened?
I'm not trying to litigate it.
But then we don't have to go through it, John.
Okay, I'm going to finish a sentence.
No, I'm going to call the question, because there's no reason to talk about that project again, John.
I'm not trying to talk about that project, I'm talking about...
But you keep bringing it up, can we focus on this project?
Listen, Jonathan, I'm talking about this project. Am I allowed to talk about this project?
But what does Bernie and what Bernie may have done or that have to do with tonight's project?
So you're not following what I'm saying at all?
I am.
No, I don't think so.
You're concerned that you just don't want it to look like we're doing it today? You don't want it to be anywhere like what happened before?
Exactly.
And we're being above board with all the information we're bringing now, right?
Well, I don't know, you're not exactly letting me finish, so it doesn't seem like it to me.
John, you have all the information in the packet, right? We've had financing...
So I'm not allowed to have questions on what's in the packet?
About this particular project, yes.
So included in current budget, yes. But it says the note here, would be included in construction costs of cafeteria remodel, which means that it's included in the budget for the cafeteria remodel. It doesn't mean the cafeteria remodel is included in the budget. So we have to come up with the money somewhere, which is why I'm saying that I just want to make sure that we're not doing anything un, I know we wouldn't be doing anything, Mike's here, we wouldn't be doing anything untoward, you know what I'm saying? But I want to make sure that there's, we just don't, we just don't, we not only need to be completely transparent, but I don't want a bait and switch like has happened in the past. And the bait and switch before was simply, they borrowed money after saying they, and then they paid it off.
Don't say that that was a bait and switch.
No, 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 no.
Nothing's wrong with what happened.
No.
Well, it was all legal. I'm not saying it wasn't legal.
But John, with terminology...
I'm sorry, that's the way it was.
Especially when you don't even know what you're talking about.
Oh, but I do.
No, you couldn't explain what Bernie did.
You didn't let me finish, that's why.
John!
May I?
Go ahead, please, Karen.
Okay, so I, I guess my question is, okay, how do we keep the public informed about what we're doing, okay? About this cafeteria remodel? I know it's in our board meetings and things, but not everyone's paying attention to what we're doing and the agendas and all of that. How do we inform the public about what we're doing and at the same time not delay our timeline if we want to get this project done for the next school year? So...
My answer to that is, we do it. We had, we had two, if I had some facilities, we're discussing it here. Why is this anything different to anything else? Because we're borrowing money? If the public wants to know, they can, they can listen to us, they can come here, they can look at...
The information is in what, the E-weekly and the Connect Two, whether it's the board debrief? All right, so there's information about the projects available that way, too?
Yeah, I tend to feel the same. At the same time, you know, I feel like the public needs to be informed. So I guess as we go along, and I don't, I think it'll be okay, but I also feel the responsibility, like, we just need to make sure that the public's aware of everything we're doing. And honestly, if they're looking at the board meetings and the notices and the minutes and all of that, it's all very clear.
Reading the Connect, yeah.
Yeah. When it comes to the borrowing and all of that, too, we need to do the same sort of transparency.
I would say we haven't not done that, so I don't know why it makes me a point of saying that. It's an implication that we weren't doing that, I don't think that's the case.
I agree.
Okay. Any, anything else for these two items? Mike? Okay. So then again, this will come back for potential action in two weeks. On to B, Whitno Middle School, Whitno High School, 2020, 2021 course proposals.
Good evening. We have two course proposals going in front of the board and both of them are, have been borne out of or verified through the recent program reviews that art and music programs went through. So we have one in the music department. The music department is asking for a consideration for a course that would be middle school specific and it would serve needs for band students who maybe did not hop on board with the beginning band years in elementary school or sixth grade and would allow kids who are in seventh and eighth grade to take a beginning band class for the first semester of the school year, giving them some hands-on with the fundamentals, a little more targeted instruction, so that they would be better equipped to join in to the group in second semester, as opposed to joining the group that has already been in progress for a couple of years, which tends to be a little bit intimidating and slows their progress a bit. So that would be for seventh and eighth grade students at the middle school, first semester only. The second is an art fundamentals course, and you heard a bit about this during the art program review. And we have art teachers here, too, in case there are some additional questions. They are proposing an art fundamentals course that would be a half-credit. It would be offered for students to gain some fundamentals exposure before diving into the more advanced courses at the high school level, particularly with those students in mind that did not take art in middle school and then have a hard time trying to access some of those advanced level courses in high school. It would be open to all students and students who did take courses at the middle school would be able to bypass that course through a portfolio process.
So that would be a one semester class, either fall or spring semester?
Yeah, depends on enrollment, yep, yep.
Karen, you have any questions?
Yep. Okay, so I have two. Regarding the music, my only question is that we're remaining committed to the elementary instrumental music program. And so, and then my only other question is that both of these courses then would be dependent on having strong registration, so that, let's say if we only get two or three kids, then we're not running the class.
Yeah, they would still adhere to board policy with enrollment, yep.
They would each be half-credit classes?
Correct.
Okay, I just didn't see it listed on music and...
It just says semester one, yeah, sorry.
Well, that's what I was trying to say, is I don't see it listed on the music and it is .05 credit on the arts, so I know that's just a typo.
They don't do credits at middle schools.
Right, right.
So there wouldn't be any in the music class, because that's a middle school class, we don't do credits there?
It's a one semester class at middle school.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for coming, guys.
On to six action items. A is approval of personnel recommendations. Do I have a first, some of second?
Second.
Anybody have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, seeing non-motion carries on to seven reports. A is curriculum and outcomes model with Lynn.
So this was, add in the, into the board media? So, well, I'll get started while she's bringing that up. So we'd been talking along the lines of continuous improvement, strategic plan, about developing a model and we had had some help with the wordsmithing of, you know, the, we called it, I think, systematic and systemic. And we've gone through some wordsmithing. And what we were going for is really how do we sort of get a K-12 model going for us to really align how we ask questions, how we investigate, you know, our curricular questions, et cetera. And rather than just kind of guessing at things and having a bunch of people try to figure out, try to figure out what's happening at any given time, we're looking for a model that would really help teachers and administrators and everyone be on the same page as far as which questions we ask at which particular times.
What do you... Talking about the report card?
No, this was just a model of... Do you want me to email it again?
Well, while they're working on that, why don't we go to date items for future consideration? Go back, anyone have any items for future consideration? Okay.
Oh, okay.
I'd just like to know why high school courses taken by middle schoolers, they don't get high school credit for it. I, I just like to know why high school courses taken by middle schoolers, they don't get high school credit for it.
Nine announcements?
The middle schoolers and divers are doing pretty good, so...
Yeah?
Second place, girls?
Yep, and then I think we have, probably wrong in the number of events, I think nine events at state. So we've got, I think, three divers, and we have a couple events where they're a good chance to win the event, so be state champions, so it's gonna be a good showing. It's Friday, and diving starts at like noon or one or something. It's really early on Friday, and then swimming starts around six, or six-thirty or seven.
I'll also give a... I'll also give a shout-out to Whitnall Dance, it sounds like they're having a really strong start to their season. And then I see we have this nice flyer for 100 Years of Broadway that looks like it's gonna be a great show from Whitnall Music and Theater.
The musical, not musical, but choir, band, orchestra are all coming up. That was just put on the form, I'm sure it is or will be in the Connect, so that ball concert, I think, starts at seven.
I was not able to attend, but I understand the band performed at the Veterans Memorial Area in Hales Corners on Sunday morning, I think it was. I hear it went well.
I don't want to have to do that baby shark dance that we did during the musical. Ready? All right, let's go.
Okay, so this will eventually be in your, in your things, as you can have this and be able to look at it. So this document, we, we shared some things about our continuous improvement planning, and we will head it to staff on our October 24th Staff Development Day. And you will recognize a lot of this language, because we've had a lot of discussion around it. So we're talking about this goal here, about developing an effective systematic model for delivering high-quality learning experiences. And that's what we were talking about earlier, when we were saying, you know, some of the wording maybe didn't get at what we wanted to get at, so we wordsmithed that to make it a little bit more friendly to what we actually mean by that goal statement. So we did share this with staff, and just talked about, you know, where we are in the planning here and what we're looking at for a student achievement goal. And out of this, we've been working with that particular model. And we are already in process with a model, and now the idea is to build it and make it very user-friendly and very meaningful for, for teachers and teams to access and have it be a living model that we come back to and base everything on. We are calling it the curriculum and outcomes model, because we really want to be able to say we are focused on setting the stage properly for teachers to deliver instruction and learning to students. And then we are looking at outcomes and making sure that the outcomes are doing what we would like them to do as far as those high-quality learning experiences. Typically, right now, we will say, okay, something's not right, and there's a lot of guesswork. There's a lot of, you know, we look at data, then we say, so is it, is it a curricular resource? Do we not have things aligned properly? Are they not sequenced properly? Are we doing something instructionally that's redundant, or we're leaving a hole somewhere? So this is gonna give us a better sequence of questions to ask, and everybody can come back to the same series of questions, and the questions then become pretty good for everybody. So we said to teachers, you know, so why the need for a curriculum framework? And we really just want to be able to do these two things. We want to be able to identify opportunities for improvement and drive system-wide improvements.
Is this a one-time exercise, or something that's gonna be repeated regularly?
This is a, it's a thing that we're building, that we will continue to live with, and this will be our document to keep coming back to. Teachers are already in the build stage with this, so when you look at this, this is the curriculum framework. So we rolled it out as the curriculum framework on the 24th, but it was nothing new to teachers, because this is a lot of the work they've already been engaged in within their courses. So developing what is the course title and overview, you know, what's the intent of the course? What's the purpose and goal of the course? The learning targets and the standards that are gonna be covered in that course? The organization of units, proper sequencing, just to make the learning flow well. Defining rubrics, so that everyone can articulate the learning that's expected to come out of that particular course and those standards and targets. And then the assessments that we give, making sure that we're assessing what we intend to assess. Teachers were actually very, at first when we said curriculum framework, it was, everyone was like, oh my gosh, new, but then they said, oh, that's not new, this is what we've been doing all along. So they felt pretty good about that.
When you say all along, define what all along means, not like the last twelve years?
No, 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 for the last year and a half or so, we have said that we really need to get an articulated curriculum and something written down. I thought we really should have a written-down curriculum, and we never had anything formal and written and housed in one area. So that's been our mission for the last year and a half, is to say, what are we doing? Let's get it down into one housing area. So teachers have been saying, here's our course, here are all these components of the curriculum framework, and they are filling those in. This is our course completion rate, or not course completion, our framework completion rate as of October 1st. Some of these numbers have changed based on the number of courses that we offer, so this is not number of teachers or anything. We offer 176 different courses, K through 12. And so of those 176 courses, 81% of them have fully completed a comprehensive course title and overview. 82% of those courses have identified learning targets and standards, et cetera, et cetera. You can see the numbers kind of fall back a little bit as we get further along from left to right, just because the area of focus has been from left to right, of, you know, getting that first two things really short as tightly as possible. Assessments, we put an NA, because we have not focused assessments. And we don't really want to focus on assessments, developing newer, more comprehensive assessments, until we get rubrics really clearly defined, because the rubrics are really what's going to articulate the learning for us. When you look at the completion rates, it looks funny, because it's like, well, do we not have some of our courses complete? This is just the updates. There are some that are still in process. For instance, K through five social studies just got brand-new standards this past spring, so we did a whole new scope and sequence, so they're still in process. When that happens, that just means that they continue to teach what they've been teaching and then start making updates to the curriculum as they, as they go. So they did some work over the summer, they do some work as they go through the school year, will do some more work over the summer, and then those course completion dates will all bump up. Any questions on that? Completion timeline, we've established this timeline in conjunction with teachers and the teacher content specialists of, you know, what is reasonable to say that we'll be completely finished with all of this work, knowing that we have new standards coming up, knowing that we get new staff occasionally that will walk in and have to do some of this work, or not really understand some of the work, or have to reinvent some of the work. So we're looking at 100% completion rates by these times, always knowing that there's gonna be room for improvement and areas of tweaking. And we've already got some teachers who are like, we thought we were done, but now we'd like to go back and relook at something. So that's always gonna be the case, no matter how done we say we are, actually. The driving question is this. So we have this curriculum framework, and really, we can't expect anything out of teaching and learning until we have a really strong curriculum framework. So once we have that strong curriculum framework, the driving question is, do our outcomes align with district goals? And when we worked with teachers in October, we talked about, how do we define district goals? Some districts will say, well, we expect 80% of our students to be proficient in ELA at all times. We expect 80% of our students, and we all agreed that we can't really say that just yet, because some of those goals will be defined by our continuous improvement strategic planning. So we said, for now, how do we actually define those goals? So they actually did some talking and said, well, everybody really expects these first two bullet points. We really expect that, you know, there's gonna be alignment between what the curriculum says and what's happening in a classroom. And we want direct alignment between what the data shows us, whether it's somebody else's data, like that external, like, forward exam or ACT, or whether it's our teacher-created assessments. We want to see some alignment between those two things. We want to maintain scores that remain above state averages in all areas. And then we'll get more specific goals once we are complete with that framework, especially the assessment piece. So we just talked with them about, you know, here's external sources of data, examples of external sources, and examples of internal sources of data. External just means that somebody else created the assessment. Internal means that teachers have created, that teachers have created the assessment. So this is what the whole process looks like, then. And that driving question up at the top, do outcomes align? And then we just follow a path. So if the outcomes are aligning with what we are expecting to see, then we just are in a continuous improvement as necessary, small tweaks, adaptations, modifications as necessary. First question, if the answer is no, so all of a sudden we see something we didn't expect, then we come over here and say, is the framework accurate and clearly defined? So if we have, for instance, an issue in seventh grade math where we're just not seeing the results we thought we would see, the first thing we do is we don't go looking at teachers, we don't go looking in classrooms. We go up to this and say, do we have all of this clearly defined and well-articulated? And if the answer is no, then the first thing we do is we say, okay, so what do we need to do to really get that piece of the curriculum back up to speed, or up to speed? If the answer is yes, we went and looked up here, and it seems like everything's in place, and teacher's like, yep, that's, that's what we thought it said, then we come down here and say, okay, so then how is it that this is not getting articulated or translated into the classroom? And then we come down here and say, okay, so what do we do now? And work with teachers to say, so is something happening in the classroom that's not written here, or vice versa? And we start asking questions. Once we figure out what's going on there, then we just come back up to this continuous improvement as necessary. So it gives us a really predictable way to just say, we're not ever blaming anybody or anything. We just have a series of questions where, first, we'll always look to that curriculum framework to make sure it's where we need it to be. If it's not, then we figure out where the holes are, and we work with those holes. If it is, then we say, teachers, what do we need to do to help get that curriculum framework translated into instruction? If there's a discrepancy in those outcomes, then basically, we're just following those things, and we just keep going back through that whole cycle. We did get quite a bit of feedback from teachers, that they appreciated having a model where they, they feel like less nervous, like, because teachers tend to like, look at data and go, is it me? Is it me? Is it you? Is it us? Is it me? Well, now, we don't know, but we know whether we're first gonna look to our curriculum, and if our curriculum looks really good to all of us, then we'll say, what needs to happen next as far as supporting the instruction?
Yeah, it's just that simple.
This is our, we were saying we wanted that systematic model, this is the, yep, so...
I mean, you plug it in there and watch it go. Interrupt it when you need to interrupt it and make changes.
Yes.
What do we do now?
Right now, we look at data, we say, okay, we think it might be this, we think it might be that, we think it might be this. It's been really hard, because without that curriculum framework in place, you don't really know what you're assessing. We don't know if we're assessing well. We are starting to find out that there are some things that, when we look at ACT or Forward Exam, there are some things that our students are being assessed on, that we have discovered recently, that they're not actually learning those things in the classroom until after they've been assessed on them, on the Forward Exam or on the ACT. So then saying, okay, curriculum framework, we'd have to reshuffle some of those unit sequences, so they get the proper instruction at the proper time. Right now, without that curriculum framework, it's been some kind of guesswork. I mean, everyone's doing the right work, but it's a little out of sequence and a little whack-a-mole.
So to that point, one of the reasons we brought it forward, that was sort of the first one that came forward with the model and that, and this is sort of what you're seeing in preview of a lot of the other stuff that's coming from our continuous improvement, is to simplify it into some, some guide like this, whatever it is. As, as her model points out, if the curriculum isn't working, then maybe there's something we need to look at, instructional framework. So there will be a simplistic framework that goes for that, or other processes in this group under some of the other classes. So this sort of provides some of that model if you will, or simple frameworks that people can follow. So there's a systematic approach to something. So it's not complicated in terms of visually, it's simplistically explained, although the work behind it, it's done. I don't want you to do some of that, but for people to understand, is to have a model that's easy to visualize and comprehend.
Yeah, I'll just add real quick that, you know, when we were talking in the beginning about identifying opportunities and driving improvement, I think it'll be interesting as we go along to hear how some of that plays out, to hear like, okay, what opportunities were identified, and then what improvements have been made. So it'll be interesting to observe, and to hear some of that as you guys go through the process.
Okay, on to meeting debrief, anyone?
Yeah. John, I have a really, really hard time with what you said. I, I know several people that were on the community committee, and I know you know numerous people that are on there. And these are people who are integrity. They, they started with the project and followed it all the way through, took it to the community, and to say that, I, I, I don't know, I don't know. I really think you need to probably retract those words.
Not at all. I can explain it, but Jonathan's gonna say I'm litigating something. I have no problems with, I'm gonna have no...
Is that necessary?
Yeah, because that, you stopped me from making my point before, because you said I was litigating it, and I thought it was rude.
It's not about making points while using that terminology, that's wrong.
Saying bait and switch, yes.
That's how it came across to me as a taxpayer, not on the board.
That's your impression.
Wait a minute, now, am I responding to what Quinn said, or are you gonna debate with me on something?
John.
Okay, I'll respond to what Quinn said. So I have no problems at all with, with Bernie and, and there was nothing below board at that point in time. Everything was above board. But the way things ultimately ended up was not the way it was sold to the public when it first went forward. And that's what I just wanted to make sure that we were going to avoid in this case, because I'm a part of the board now. That's all I was getting at.
That's wrong.
What's that?
We need to be careful about what you say about what happened in the past, John, if you weren't involved in it. And I resent that as well. I was on the board at that time.
I know you were.
There was nothing that was below board.
That's what I just said.
Something that was not represented correctly to the community.
Well, I, I disagree, and I know you were on the board, and I'm not saying anybody did. I, I, once again, I'll say, I don't think anything was done below board. Everything was above board for everybody to see, and nothing was done improperly. I agree with that. However, the way it went forward, it changed directions after it was approved and a year into it, and that's what I disagreed with. And I just want to make sure that we're, when the course that we choose on this, that we stay the course.
I disagree with that statement as well.
That's fine.
And again, that's your opinion.
Yeah.
You're not stating a fact on behalf of the board. You're stating your opinion.
I can only speak for me, I can't speak for the board.
But as a board member saying that this is how it happened, and it was wrong, and it was a bait and switch, you're speaking from your position on the board. This is your opinion of how you think things happen.
Yes, and it's my concern.
Your factual representation of what may have actually happened.
Go watch the tapes. But that's fine.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries, thank you.